When the county should have insurance on that cop car, or we need to be explained why we are paid every time you have an accident for that accident that an officer has. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. The first item on our agenda is the sanitary rate increase. This has been brought back from a previous meeting.
Good morning. Kevin Merrick from Sanitary Disposal 81144, Highway 395 in Hermison, Oregon. Good morning. So, we're looking to kind of go back to what we were looking at before the 12.42% increase after we met last week and kind of went over some of the hurdles that we have as a business. We're requesting the 12.42%, and as we discussed, started on July 1 of this year.
If I remember right, and I see Mike McHenry in the audience, you're the lowest rate of any of the providers in the county, is that right?
That's correct.
Is that true even without the franchise fees?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, well, I looked up, I just looked up Milton's this morning, and I found a lower rate, so I'm not quite for sure, by almost $6 per month. And so, I, and I do have a comment. We've talked several times about, I realize doing business in this environment right now is tough. It's tough being a business. The thing is, Mr. Merrick, the three of us are accountable. We are accountable, and believe me, we get calls. And so, my only, I have looked at all the information, I've done a lot of research, you know, we've visited. My only question is this, can you show us a 12.42% increase in the cost of doing business in the last five months?
So, it's not the last five, so, you know, I get what you're saying, because it's a 5%.
Five in November, and so, it's, it's 12.42%. And I guess in order to be accountable to people in Yumattila County, I need to be able to say, yes, I mean, there was a 12.42% increase in just doing the cost of business. So, can you show that?
Yeah, we have, you know, even just showing, you know, how much, you know, we spend on, you know, just like our disposal rate has went up 8%, our laborers went up 7.47, health insurance almost 4%, our fuels went up 46%, our trucks have went up 38%, yellow iron 22%, carts and containers are up 32%. You know, and we, I know that we discussed the PPI versus a CPI. The PPI is a producer's index. We're not a producer, we just provide a service. So, that's why we use a CPI versus the PPI.
As a consumer.
Well, we still purchase fuel, we still pay utilities.
That's why it's all wrapped up into the PPI.
I think what makes me nervous too is the fact that this is a jump, you know, and it isn't like we own a window company. And so, if people don't like our price, or they don't, you know, they don't have to buy that window. But for a sanitary service, we're locking them in. I mean, they have to pay that rate. And so, that's my only concern, is that I know people are having a rough go right now, big time. But on the other hand, you need to stay in business. I mean, you have business costs, and I certainly appreciate that.
You know, we haven't had, you know, besides the 5.5 in 2022, we haven't had an increase since 2019. So, there's a big window from 2019 to 2022 where there, you know, we weren't allotted, even though Mike just didn't come in for one.
Additional comments?
What's the wishes of your motion?
You know, I'm going to make the motion to approve the adopted order of BCC 2023-013. And I understand what my colleagues are saying, I get it, and I see where you're at too, and it's, you know, it's tough to do a business, especially in this day and time, so. But that being said, I don't want you to keep falling further and further behind. That's why I made the motion.
I know we don't have a crystal ball, so there's no way we're going to know where we're going to be at in, yeah, a year. I mean, I'm assuming you'll probably come back in a year and ask for that rate increase, but...
You know, the CPI number that we pulled too is December of '22. We've ran it since then, and it just went up another one and a half percent also. So, it is continuing to go.
Same. I'll second the motion. I'm going to make comments. So, for the last four years, if you average that out, it's about a 5% increase, just under 5% increase per year. That's healthy. And that includes years when the PPI was negative. PPI has been around two and a half, it has been up to 7% here in the last year. As we discussed, there's no anticipation, or probably no appetite from this board at all to look at anything major again like this if it passes. And we would like to revisit a year from July. And because I don't want to get behind the eight ball like this. I don't feel we were behind the eight ball, even with Mike coming in every three years. He brought in a lot of information, a lot of information that we went through together. So, I'm going to leave my comments at that. So, there's a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
So, the measure passes two to one. Thanks, Mike. Thanks for all of your time.
Thank you.
We just, we just got to pay attention to the...
I, yeah, I totally get it. I understand, and, you know, me being new to kind of the process and what everybody's fiscal year is, you know, I'll come in a little bit more prepared. And when we do come in, you know, every year, it's not a big jump like we're seeing right now. So, that's one thing that, you know, Waste Connections does want to do, is come in every year, so we're not seeing these big increases. So, thanks for your time.
Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is the PATH Strategic Plan, and I see our manager David Stockdale and the PATH project manager here, along with Carla McLean. So, I don't know which who and all or if.
I think it's both of us. So, for the record, Carla McLean, Carla McLean Consulting, 170 Van Buren Drive, Yumattila, Oregon.
And I'm Dave Stockdale, City Manager for City Yumattila. Thank you very much, Commissioners, for having us here today. You want to go ahead and introduce?
Sure. So, Dave actually reached out, oh, gosh, many months ago, and asked me to help facilitate some things with Project PATH. So, I worked on the RFP for the, for the process to identify a contractor to help implement it. I think you guys are well aware of the grant that was received, that's kind of the background behind this, that was, came after the passage of House Bill 3115, which says, "Thou shalt figure out a path to deal with homelessness and those at risk of becoming homeless." After the grant and the RFP and a contractor selected, I also worked with the city to work on the land use planning process, to approve the site, annex the portion of property, and approve the conditional, conditional use permit for it to be sited where it's proposed out of the corner of, I always remember, forget, Benzel and...
And Lind.
And Lind. And so, comes the next step. As we're working to get up and running and really start implementing services, there's a requirement in this, in the statute that was passed that there be a strategic plan. And so, that's kind of the next phase I've been working on. It's been really eye-opening experience to work on this process. I've learned a lot about the community I live in, the people who are homeless in that community. I've always known that the pit counts, so that's the place and time that we take every year in January. I've always known they were underrepresented of the region. For starters, when Morrell County came up with zero every year when I worked over there, it was like, that's not true. They may not be visible, but we know there's homeless out there. Some of them are what we call couch surfers, or people who are moving around through the system. And we may not see them on the curb, we may not see them walking down the street, but we still know they're out there. We have to figure out how to account for them, and then provide them adequate services to move them from homelessness through some level of transitional housing, to get them into permanent housing. So, the strategic plan is really designed to look at, from the advisory committee's perspective, what's the objective? What are our goals? How are we going to get from where we are to where we need to be? It's designed to be a five-year plan. It's also clearly designed not to be something that we read, we adopt, and then we put on the shelf. It's designed to be something that the advisory committee is going to be looking at, checking themselves against, and making sure that they're moving forward. Which means you two get to hold Commissioner Doran accountable, because he is one of the representatives on the advisory committee, along with the city managers from each of the communities in West Yumattila County. So, I'm happy to get into the details of the plan itself, but I think, I know you've, you probably haven't had a long time to read it. So, I think in a nutshell, what we've tried to do is kind of provide a background, state a vision, provide some description of what the project is, who the advisory committee is, who the contractor is that's implementing the vision, not the entire vision. There's a portion of this that is the responsibility of the advisory committee, and there's a portion of this that is the responsibility of the contractor. We've identified the key partners in the strategic plan document. We've identified funding, initial funding, and funding that both the advisory committee and the contractor need to continue to go out and seek and source to make sure that Project PATH is successful. We've got some words and phrases to make sure that we all are in agreement with the words we're using. And then, the strategic plan itself, I think, is the most important part. You know, we always put the most important part at the back of documents. I have yet to figure out why we do that, but it's a planner problem too. So, there's four goals: to provide shelter, to provide services, to provide housing, and to provide advocacy. And I think that's really the crux of where we're at and what we're attempting to do. If you're following along in your own document, I'm on pages 13 and 14 for that. We conclude with some implementation, and just for clarity, the implementation is really five questions or statements that's in the legislation that the pilot projects have to comply with. So, that's, that's really the plan. I'm trying to respect your time today. That's really the plan in the shortest version possible, and I'm a talker. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Dave is here as well, and whatever I can't answer, I know he can.
Yeah, well, if I could add a little bit to that as well. So, one of the things as we worked with this, you know, we're one of a few pilots throughout the state. The, you know, we meet frequently, and one of the things that each of the pilots throughout the state have looked at is, is with the strategic plan requirement, is that a lot of us wanted more time, because we felt like this is just obviously a very robust and complex problem, and trying to get something, I mentioned, this is 16 pages, which is a streamlined plan. That is kind of by design. Part of that has to do with the fact that there is a lot of flexibility, and I would say fluidity right now, when it comes to homelessness and houselessness throughout the state. Just last week, the legislature passed House Bill 2001. The executive, the governor's office is looking at, has tasked the Oregon Housing Commission and DAS and others to put that program together, to implement those funds out through the counties. And what we wanted to do to Carla's point is not just have a document that says, great, here's a document we have, essentially kind of put on the shelf and go and do. This is meant to be a document that is going to be refined and revisited throughout the time. So, today is kind of a snapshot in time. You, we're hoping to be able to adopt this plan, and then we'll be back nine months to a year later with refinements as more funding hopefully trickles down and becomes available, more services and priorities and goals throughout the state are better defined, and so that we can adapt to those as well and implement those in what we're doing. And so, this document really is set up to be one that we're referencing often, we're following its goals. We've left it relatively broad rather than finite and succinct that way, and that's by design. So, really, this is an opportunity for you to provide a comment on what you see so far. If there's anything that you want us to drill down a little bit deeper and be more specific in, this is not right this moment, but if you have it, you can hear it from you now. But we have about the next month to continue to refine this draft, and we hope to come back to you in May or June with, to get this finalized and adopted at that point in time. But we just wanted to have this opportunity to gain in any feedback, questions you may have, so that we can refine this document over the next 60 days or so.
Before I ask you to go through the mechanics, I do want to make one comment, is there actually has been quite a bit of feedback already from the group. And it's kind of, kind of interesting, there's a weekly catch-up call with all of the pilots. And everybody's in a different, different area, but everybody is, has the same requirements. And early on, it was kind of like herding cats, and now, actually Carla and David have become somewhat of the leaders throughout the state on where we are and where, and the position that we're in, because everybody has different programs. Not everybody's is the same program, but everybody has the final goal. So, I've been pretty proud of everybody. I know it takes more time than I am used to. My patience is, you guys know, I don't, I have ADD, so I don't, I don't wait long. But the one thing that Dave didn't go through is that each of the partners, I'll let you go through the mechanics, what happens from here after the approval, so?
Yeah, very good. So, the, what, to your initial point, I wanted to hit that, and then I'll answer the question, which was, the pilot program was meant to be a regional solution, that we know the best way to serve our residents and our community members best. And I got to, you know, give credit where credit's due to the state. That's not typical action. Usually, the state's going to give you, here's our absolute box, and you have to play in that box. With, to our, the advocacy group and to the, that worked on this from the very beginning said, we want local control because we can understand. So, for us, to Commissioner Doran's point, transitional housing is important for us, to get people that opportunity to get back on their feet, have access to resources, and sort of graduate into permanent housing and move forward, and that takes some time. Not everybody is doing that. Some communities have things like that already set up, or some variety of that, but they needed sort of emergency sheltering services, so that's where their primary focus has been. So, ours has been not, not totally unique, but one in which that is customized for us and works really well. As far as the process for this, yeah, so what you're seeing here, this is already the third version, the third draft of this document, because it's worked through the advisory committee, which, again, is the city managers, our Contractor Stepping Sounds Alliance, and Commissioner Doran, all the representatives and partners on that, and then some general feedback that we've had from other community members that are helping and participating through that process. And so, we've been able to, again, this is your third iteration. So, from here, we're going to all the elected boards, gathering whatever feedback we have, taking that back to advisory committee. We're going to essentially have those as a red line incorporation for review. Generally speaking, unless there's something that seems either really outrageous, or just not really possible to implement, or too cost prohibitive, or something like that. For the most part, if there's any elected board that has something they want to incorporate it in, we're going to incorporate it. to incorporate it in, we're going to incorporate it into this document. Um, uh, and if we have issues with trying to implement that, we'll just discuss those and say that this is a, you know, ambitious goal, or this is maybe cost prohibitive, but we're going to do our best to get that incorporated. Uh, once we have this done, uh, and, and adopted, then it's, it's all about implementation at that point. And so the good news is, is a lot of these, uh, items in here, not all, but a lot of them are already in some phase of that implementation process. A lot of it will be, will be further along once we have the facilities set up, uh, and we're able to, to, not, right now, we just have the overnight, um, emergency sheltering services. Uh, we'll, we're still constructing the individual housing units. We'll have those, uh, ready, prepared and we'll be at the Lind and Benzel site, uh, in about, well, in about two months.
So do you want us to approve this and then bring amendments back? Or do you want us to wait till it's been redlined and finalized and then bring it back for approval?
Yeah, not approval today. So what we're looking at today is if you have any immediate comments you'd like us, we'll go ahead, jot those down, get that information. If there's something in here that's weak that you think we need to spend a little bit more time on, well, we'll continue to do that. If there's something that you think is just, um, completely missing, we'll be sure to incorporate that. And if you don't have all those answers for a state, that's fine. We just want to give that opportunity, uh, now to discuss and any information that I would, uh, I would assume you're working through Commissioner Dorn, that information could feed there, come, come our way and we can get that through the process to get this updated.
Do we want to set a date now or do you want to wait a couple of weeks and see where we are and, and set a, a date to bring it back for approval?
So, so on the practical side, from the consultant who's doing the red lines, um, last night was Umatilla, today is you folks. Um, we still got to get through Hermiston, Stanfield and Echo. Um, but we will have seen, have seen all of those prior to the next advisory committee meeting, which is in mid-May. So there will be another red line at mid-May. So I, I would ask that if you have anything to funnel it through Commissioner Dorn and get it to us sooner rather than later, but understand, um, you know, if it comes a little later, we'll, we'll figure it out, we'll deal with it. Um, the state has kind of put a deadline out there that has said, we have, you need to have this done by a certain date. My hope is that the advisory committee meeting in May, we have a final red line version for the advisory committee to go thumbs up to, that we then come back because all five jurisdictions have to adopt the strategic plan. So I, I, I don't want to be in that final adoption stage and have somebody go, oh, but you didn't say, because then we have to go back and figure that out.
Perfect.
For everyone.
So.
This has been, you guys have, I've read through this and you guys have done a very great job on this. I mean, it's clearly you've been very thoughtful in your process, so I applaud your efforts.
Well, I, I need to, you know, planners borrow, um, so I need to give, I need, I need to give some credit where credit is due. We did borrow some from some of the other people who are in this process along with this. Um, and so kudos to those, uh, folks, but yeah, it's, again, I've learned an incredible amount about the community I live in and, and some of the folks that are, are my neighbors through this process, so.
Thanks, thank you guys.
Yeah.
I, I have a comment, just a quick one. I, I too have read all the way through this and it's wonderful.
Thank you.
I mean, very thoughtful and I hit on things that I thought, oh yeah. My one question, Carla's advocacy, because, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of people out there that are working on their own, they're involved in civic groups and, um, religious organizations and they're trying to help, you know, this too, and I know that you're incorporating them. But there's also a, a huge group of people who think homelessness is ridiculous.
Right.
You know, and, um, and the folks that live in that area where the project is, are they coming around, um, some of those neighboring landowners? Have you been able to, to reach out to them and say?
I think so.
Partner will come on this project?
You know, as I said, I helped assist with the land use process and it was a full house. The night that we, that the City of Umatilla held that public hearing, I've never seen that meeting room that full. Now, I don't go to every meeting, but I was overly impressed with the capacity and with the folks who testified. And there were some in favor and there was more opposed. And I, I'm going to give a lot of credit to Dave because I was the consultant presenting the staff report. He was representing the applicant and he came back and he walked through so many of those issues and addressed how they would be addressed. And I have to be careful about, um, commenting on the planning commission because my husband happens to be the chair of that, of that, um, board. But they really, as a body, took those comments and were incredibly thoughtful about them. Um, and there were people who were, who were there, who were neighbors, who wa, will be neighbors, and they were opposed. And they asked for things that one might say, well, that's extreme or that's outrageous or how can we accomplish that? But I think the city, both the planning commission and staff, very diligently looked at those requests and said, we can do these things. We can figure out how to balance what we need to happen with Project Path and what the neighbors are asking for. So there's a condition on the land use, that there be a, a connection from where Project Path is at to the Clum, uh, not the Umatilla River Trail project, the large, connect all four communities, because there is no safe place to walk. When you get out to that part of Umatilla and the county, there's not a sidewalk on the highway, there's not sidewalks on the county roads, and I don't think there's an expectation that those get built. But we still need to make sure we can safely move people, whether it's through public transportation or their own two feet, whether it's walking or on a bicycle, to move safely. And, um, the path was identified, the trail was identified as an option, and that was incorporated into the land use decision. So there's going to continue to be people who are going to be opposed to this, and I do think there needs to be continued advocacy in how we talk about what happens when path opens, uh, at the actual facility. And I think that's going to be a really important role of the contractor, but also the advisory committee moving forward. And if you would have any comments about how you think we could enhance that advocacy goal, please forward that through Commissioner Dorn and be glad to think about that.
If I could add just real quick, uh, Commissioner Timmons, one, one thing that I think is just sort of human nature in general, particularly when it comes to new services, is, um, unknown things are quite difficult. And when we went through, uh, you know, so people have visions of what their personal experience is or what they've seen in other communities. And so in the very beginning, we heard a lot of, we're going to be the new Portland, we're going to need the new, the new Ben, we're going to be new whatever. And, um, those are, uh, you know, those are valid and, uh, and interesting concerns. And so, and in the very, very beginning, we don't, we didn't have as much answers as we do today. We didn't know exactly how the land use was going to work. We didn't know how the site was going to lay out. We didn't know how the transportation was going to be. We have way better answers and if not exact answers for those at this point in time. And so, um, and we've, we've worked with, um, uh, you know, our, our law, our police department. I, I know that our chief has talked to Sheriff Rowan, and I know that we've talked to several others. We're, we're working through all those processes as we're getting ready to move the facility forward. So, you know, unknown is quite scary and new is scary. And so now we have less unknown and we, uh, then it's a little bit less new as we move further along the process. I do think that, uh, no matter what, uh, people have, uh, their, their feelings one way or the other. Um, and as, as you know, and as, as we all know in this partnership is that, um, regardless, these are, these are members of our community and our, and our residents, and we have a responsibility to, uh, take care of them in a appropriate and, uh, fiscally responsible manner. And I think that this partnership has done a really great job of that and leveraging other funds. So far, we haven't spent any of, any of our own funds. We've been able to leverage state funds. There's other funding coming our way. Um, and we're continuing to look at grants and other opportunities. Even our partner's been able to receive over, you know, $200,000 in our, our contractor, over $200,000 in grants since being awarded the contract that have gone towards these efforts. So we're working quite diligently to be fiscally and prudently responsible for this and to also be able to answer a lot of these questions. But yes, advocacy, communication to the community is going to be a good job. And, you know, our, our friends in the media have actually done a really great job of, of covering path. It, it seems to be in the news every month and, uh, that's because we get into meetings like this. And I think just, one of the things that's unique about this partnership is we're doing this, we're sort of hopping from board to board to board. There's not very many items that we're all kind of working on in partnership together. And so, um, it gets the appropriate amount of coverage because it is a complex issue and it's one that we've been doing a good job, I think, working through.
It's actually built a foundation for a lot of other things in the future.
Yeah.
Thanks again.
Thank you for your work.
Great, thank you very much.
Can I make a comment?
No.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, the next item on the agenda is House Bill 2587.
Morning Commissioners, Megan Dockchusky from the Community Development Department. Um, the Oregon State Legislature is currently considering House Bill 2487, and that House bill would allow weddings and event centers in the exclusive farm use zone and counties east of the Cascade Range and, um, with counties with a population less than 85,000. Uh, community development staff are supportive of House Bill 2487 with just a slight amendment to the proposed, um, language that would allow it under a type-two use instead of a type-one use. Type-one uses are outright farm uses and type-two uses are typically in Umatilla County processed as conditional use permits. So the county can add additional conditions of approval to those types of uses. Without that change, uh, people could open an event venue with just a counter permit. There'd be no public notice to neighbors or to agencies. Um, so the department is asking for the board to, um, submit a letter of support to the legislator, um, with that slight amendment.
Thank you, Megan. Just a little bit of background is this is the bill that heavily is supported by East and Northern County Association, AOC, but it, uh, is struggling right now until bringing this letter of support is going to be big news.
This is, this is one of the ones that I get a lot of comments on and, and begging for our support, so I'm excited to see this letter come forward. Uh, with that, Mr. Chair, I would propose that we approve a letter of support for proposed House Bill 2487 and authorize Chair to sign.
Second.
Then a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Thanks for getting that draft. Next subject is Community Development Committee.
Good morning. Mr. Walder couldn't make it. Uh, he had another commitment this morning. What's before the board is a request to establish another advisory committee. Uh, this has been done in the past informally, but in this case, we're going to, uh, request the board to officially create and then appoint members to the Community Development Grant Committee. Uh, they're representatives of all of, uh, various cities in the county, and they will review the applications that are received for these grants. Uh, there are criteria for the grants now and, um, with this, the, um, representatives will be, uh, appointed for four-year terms, uh, serve once, and then they will have someone else, uh, from the cities appointed. Um, so what the request is, is to, um, establish a committee and then appoint the four individuals that have been nominated.
Thank you, Doug. Comments?
I think that, um, it's wonderful that, um, these five individuals are spread all across Umatilla County and they're all, I mean, from Ukiah to Hermiston as far as size-wise. I think that's great. So I move to adopt order number BCC 2023-017.
Second. My only comment is, um, that's kind of an all-star lineup of committee members for sure. It's, uh, it is very well represented. There's been a motion, uh, for approval in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, Public Works loader purchase.
Good morning Commissioners, Tom Fellows, Public Works. It appears that I've got more than one thing on the agenda today.
Do you need a stool? Looks like you're going to be there a while.
Might be handy. So before you, this morning, uh, Public Works is requesting permission to purchase a Komatsu WA270B wheel loader from Modern Machinery. We've found ourselves in a position in the past few years where, especially seasonally, we have a, a lot of equipment out on the roads, uh, both, um, plowing snow, we have loaders that we have, uh, uh, snowblowers attached to along with, with, uh, some brush removal equipment. What this does is this, uh, reduces our ability to, um, load and move transport gravel from our quarries because we don't, just don't have enough loader ability. So, um, this has been on our list, uh, of items to look at for quite some time. Um, we went out for RFPs. We did receive RFPs from both Modern Machinery and from Pape. Uh, this Komatsu is, is the, uh, in our opinion, is the, the best bargain, uh, available. So we're, um, asking to spend $137,000 to purchase this machine.
No, I, uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we authorize purchase of a Komatsu WA270B wheel loader for Modern Machinery amount of $137,000.
Second.
Then a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Carry on.
So the next thing is our emulsion contracts. Uh, every, every year we go out for contracts for our, our chip seal oil, our emulsion CRS tube is what we put on our roads. Uh, we chip seal approximately 50 miles road every year in Umatilla County, which takes up a, a great deal of our time. And as you can imagine, when you start talking, uh, that kind of tonnage, it adds up to a number of dollars. Uh, we received three bids this year, one from Albina, one from Ergon, and one from Idaho Asphalt. Uh, Ergon Asphalt Emulsion came in low at $521 per ton delivered to Umatilla County. Uh, we're recommending that the board, uh, accept and approve the bid from, uh, Ergon for purchase of our emulsion this year.
Rest of the guy not bad.
Uh, actually not bad because last year we paid $519 a ton. So it's.
Tom, how many tons do you need a year? Do you have any idea?
We run about 50 miles is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,500 tons. Give or take.
Thank you.
Use just.
You want to do it?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Um, I move to approve the contract for, can you say that?
Ergon.
Okay.
For, for emulsion.
Emulsion, okay. 2023 purchases with Ergon asphalt and emulsions.
Second. Then a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I want those prices to go back to my first time I was here three years ago.
Well, given the news this week, I'm thinking that we're probably headed the wrong direction. Fortunately, these prices will be locked in this year, so. Uh, the, the pickup. So, uh, Public Works, we have a, a vehicle that we've used for a number of years out there. The staff uses it to run errands, run back and forths at the courthouse, uh, get paperwork. We also use this vehicle to, when we go to out-of-town trainings, we can, uh, uh, put multiple people in and, and go to these trainings. Uh, it's, what we've been using is a 2009 Impala. It happened to be Bill Hansel's car when he was, he was on, on the, the board. So, um, it's, it's got, we were actually looking for a, a, just a newer used vehicle, um, had some conversations with, with Robert and, and finance about, uh, the enterprise program and, and thought that we would go, go ahead and update to a new pickup, four-door pickup, um, half-ton that should serve our purposes every bit as well. And if we, um, and then we'll, we'll see about the possibility of, of maybe rolling it over every few years and, and our initial investment will be, uh, will be a significant investment, but after that we should be, it'll, it'll be similar to our grader program where we, we get, uh, good return on our investment and then, and then, uh, continue to, to roll those around, so. So what we're requesting is that the board approve purchase of a, uh, 2023 Chevy four-by-four short box, uh, for the amount of $44,600.
Then a motion?
I move to authorize purchase of one Chevrolet Silverado four-by-four four-door short box pickup through Enterprise Management.
I will second that and I'm quite familiar with that program. And the return of, uh, investment is significant on those pickups, so I think that's a wise idea.
Then a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would say it's right up there with 200,000 plus that we get back on our motor graders for five years, so yes.
You're on a presser.
Uh.
That's item's yours.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm hitting the jackpot today.
That's how you want to look at it.
Yeah. So last year during our chip seal season, we had, had a problem. We, we ended up smacking a bridge rail with our, our chip spreader, did significant amount of damage. We were able to pull things back in shape so we could finish chip seal season last year, but it would not have, it wouldn't even have started the season this season. We had to send that machine back up to PacWest up in Seattle because they're, they handle Etner, and they had the ability to rebuild that front end. It was a, it was actually, turned out to be a very good thing. There, it, the, they found some other gremlins that existed in the machine and actually, actually repaired those. In fact, the technician, I got an email today, that, that did all the work wants to come down and when we start using it and have the ability to work, work through if there's any gremlins on it at, at that point that, that do show up. But they're pretty, they're very confident that they got everything fixed that needed to be fixed. The repair bill on this machine was seventy-one thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-five cents. We're requesting board approval to pay for these repairs.
Yeah. The only comment I have is somebody mentioned, well, why didn't you just buy a new one? New ones are anywhere from three hundred and fifty to seven hundred thousand dollars, so.
Hood, Hood River County bought one last year before, before the fifteen percent increase that Etner took at, at four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, so.
Seventy, seventy-one thousand was, I think, a great investment. I'll entertain a motion.
I approve payable to PacWest machinery, the amount of seventy-one thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety-five cents.
Second. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes.
I think that's it for a little.
You're smoking cigarettes today. The next one's not your.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You got it. Good morning, Joe.
Good morning. Joe Fumara, Director for Uco Health. What we've got here today is to ask for approval for a mini grant program that the department wants to, to issue. These are funds we've received from the state that originated from the Valid Measure One-O-eight Funds that passed with the, the previous increase in tobacco taxes. And we want to use up to about ninety thousand dollars of these to put out to essentially mini grants for partners in the community to do tobacco prevention activities. It would all be overseen by the Tobacco Coalition Group that the department has pulled together, which is made up of a number of partners in the, in the community who are working for tobacco cessation activities. And so what we're looking for is approval of the process. We intend to issue grants up to five thousand dollars. And all of these, all these funds have to be expended by the end of June, and so this is one of the routes with, which we're trying to do so.
Mr. Chair, have you been approved?
I, I second. If I could second it twice, I would do it.
Before I call for a vote, there's not, I don't, I don't get a chance very often, so I'm going to dive off the subject for just one second with your, with your commitment to this is, yesterday, I had the opportunity to sit in a meeting with the governor's office or, or staff, or policy director, and some other staff. And I, I got to tell you something. I was extremely proud to sit in that room with, with Joe and listen to the compliments and the position that Umatilla County's in, that Joe's put us in, especially in relation to that very touchy and, and complex and critical and contentious even issue. And I, I, I just can't say how proud I was to, to sit there in that meeting and for two hours, we spent, even longer than that, I guess, just a few hours spent time together. And I think that with Joe's professionalism, I think we came to a platform that I think we can move forward with, with all of our heads held high. So totally off subject, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Joe.
If I could make a point, so you?
Make a motion. It's all it takes. Next item on the agenda is the washer dryer purchase. Or?
Morning Commissioners. Mark Tanner, Facilities Manager, Umatilla County. So currently, we have two washers and four dryers at the jail. Right now, only one washer and two dryers are still functioning. They're original equipment when the jail was built. So I'm asking for permission to go out for bid to replace the two washers and the four dryers.
Any idea ballpark where we are money-wise?
Uh, I, we're going to be in the probably eighty-five to a hundred thousand.
Okay. How, Sheriff Ron, right now in, in the jail, how, are those, do those things run twenty-four seven? They've always been on every time I've gone through there.
Just predominantly during day, the daytime hours will call. Because at a certain point at, at night, the facility goes on lockdown, so everybody is put basically to bed. Of course, they don't go to sleep, but.
It's a theory.
We, we try to run a couple of folks doing laundry so we can do then exchange, do uniform exchange, et cetera.
I got you. Makes sense. I'll entertain a motion. Or comments, I'm sorry. No comments?
No, I think it'll be interesting to see how much they are going to be.
Entertain a motion.
I authorize issuance of invitation to bid for purchase of two washer units and four dryer units for the jail.
Second. Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's Mark. Now we have.
Okay, this, yep, this one is, so we have been replacing the glass in the cell doors and the windows in the cells with the polycarbonates whenever they get broken because the polycarbonate can't be broke. And we actually, because of the remodel, we put off a bunch. And so now we're, since we're getting ready to reopen the jail to full capacity, we, we've been replacing all the ones we put off. And so this purchase was for the polycarbonate for ten thousand five hundred and six dollars and eighty-nine cents from Professional Plastics, which has been the best price we've been able to find.
Plastics or places?
Hmm?
Professional plastics or professional places?
Plastics.
And they, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Are you doing the install yourself?
Yes. Yeah, we, we bring them here, down to our shop, and we cut them to size and then pick them back and install them.
So is this enough supplies to finish out that project now? Because we did it last spring or year.
Yeah, we do it all the time. I mean, inmates break the glass on a regular basis, so.
The carb, the polycarbonate isn't getting broke, right?
No, no, it doesn't.
You don't, will this finish out the jail then?
Oh, no. No.
Still got ways.
Yeah. And there, there should be, we ordered one extra sheet because it takes so long to get it. We need to have some on, on hand, otherwise if it gets broke, that, that cell becomes unusable until it's repaired.
No, I just was, so how, how many more rounds do you think we have?
Oh, there's hundreds of windows in there, so. We've only done a, a small dent.
Probably got thirty down or something.
Yeah, probably thirty, thirty-five.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Entertaining a motion?
Well, I have one more question. How many windows can you do out of one sheet?
Uh, depends on which ones are broken. So like this last sheet, we got four out of a sheet. We just, the way we lay it out is however many we can get. I think the time before that, we got five because it was some of the smaller ones.
Entertaining a motion. Shareable approval? Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay.
Yeah, this is for the Community Corrections Project, so this will be reimbursed by Community Corrections. But this is for drywall parts and pieces for ninety-eight hundred to Norton Construction.
Mr. Chair, have you been approved?
I only have one question before the vote, and that's, so are all of the, all of these Community Corrections billings, are all of those accumulate, accumulated and then at one, one time gets paid?
I'm getting ready to.
reimbursed as you go.
I'm getting ready to push one through. I usually try and wait till we have a substantial dollar amount, and then I'll get with Marie, and she'll do the transfer between departments.
Data, okay. Perfect. Thanks. Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item is Community Corrections payable.
This is coming before the board because of the dollar amount exceeds five thousand. This is for approval to pay a contractor for Community Corrections training and strategic planning. It's for diversity, equity, and inclusion. This was funded by a grant through the C J C program, Criminal Justice Commission program. And the total amount of the contract is for nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. There currently is a payable, which is the first installment of seventy-five hundred dollars, which is being requested to be approved, along with the total payment of nineteen thousand five hundred.
I've spoken with Dale about this. I think it's a fantastic program, and with that, I would give approval.
I do have one, I just, one question. Is the seventy-five hundred on top of the nineteen?
No, it's part of it.
Out of the big pile.
There would be two more payments of six thousand dollars each.
Okay. Second.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you.
The next item is the BAFTA.
Opioid.
I'm sorry.
Uh, this is going to be for the board to approve a plan coming from Community Corrections as well as Community Counseling Solutions. This is to be funded through the funds that the county has received from the opioid litigation. The proposal is to contract with C C S to provide services within the municipal courts. You have Pendleton and Hermiston, as well as potentially other ones in the county, but we'll be starting with Pendleton and Hermiston. And that person will be there to provide wraparound services for the people that would need the services that are coming through multiple times through the municipal court system, but not the state court system. The details of the plan are put in the summary, and the plan itself is before the board for review and approval. The estimated cost at this point is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year.
And my name's Kevin from the U of U eight seven.
Yes, there are, there are adequate funds at this time that the county has received from the multiple defendants from that litigation.
Without Dale being in the room, this makes it a lot easier for me to say this, but this is a fantastic idea, so, and I applaud him and Kimberly for their efforts on this.
And I think they're going to end up being the architects of a program that spreads wide and deep.
I agree. I agree.
I, I agree, and I, after talking to Judge Hill the other day, this is exactly what they're looking for. I mean, they need something on the municipal court level, so, yeah. I move to approve Municipal Court System Navigation Plan and Use of Opioid Litigation Settlement to Fund Services.
Second. Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item on the agenda is the, the BAFTA, BAFTA Summary and Adjustments.
Okay, this is the summary of the action that the Board of Property Tax Appeals took at its hearing. Originally, there were thirty appeals. Their tax assessed value following review with staff, there were, most of those were stipulated or withdrawn, and five actually went to a hearing. And based on those five, those are the results that are before the board for approval.
Questions, comments?
Chair, I move that we adopt order B C C twenty-two twenty-three dash zero one five.
Been a mo, I'm sorry. Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item on the agenda is Crime Property Ordinance Amendment. This is a public hearing, right?
Yes, yes, as well, dear.
All right. We'll, this time, go into a public hearing. This is the second reading of amendments to the county crime property ordinance. It's set before the board. The amendments expand the list of activity that would fall within the application of the ordinance and also include activity within four hundred feet of the property. The first reading was on March fifteen, twenty twenty-three. Following the public hearing, the ordinance can be adopted. So at this time, I'd open up the floor for those that want to speak in favor of this ordinance. Again, three minutes. Those that want to oppose this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name, three minutes. Any neutral folks that want to speak to this item, please come to the podium and limit your comments to three minutes.
Seeing only you on line either?
Thank you. Thanks. Seeing none, I'll call, close the public hearing. And what's the wishes of the commission?
I move to adopt ordinance number twenty-two twenty-three dash oh three.
Could second that?
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, I got to check both lists, is a D A payable.
This is a board payable coming before the board for approval due to the dollar amount. It is for a forensic examination that was requested and performed for the District Attorney's Office, and the amount of six thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents is being requested to be paid for the exam services.
Mr. Chair, have you been approved?
Been a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Back to both my lists. Improvement projects.
Okay, what's coming before the board is a request to identify and prioritize county eligible capital improvement projects for allocation of payments. This is coming as a result of a long-term, long-term enterprise zone agreement. Under that, the county will be receiving funds that are limited to capital improvement projects within the county. And what is being requested, that the board identify which project the county would like to fund with these, this payment, and then prioritize those projects to the extent allowed by the funding.
Comments, questions?
I'm not seeing underneath the improvement projects. I have, it throws me right back to the.
You might try refreshing and see if that, there was.
I, I can read, I can read the pinkie though. Under the terms of a long-term enterprise zone agreement, when construction is started on the development, sponsors will receive a one-time payment for capital improvement projects. The county should be receiving this payment shortly, and county projects eligible for the funding will need to be identified and prioritized. The matter is before the board for discussion and allocation. The requested action is to identify and prioritize county eligible capital improvement projects for allocation of payment.
Yeah. Oh, so we've approval?
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second to for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm thinking we want to identify what those projects are and prioritize them.
Yeah. We don't, do we need to do that right now?
Yes. I mean, that's, but it's four, otherwise we won't have any, you haven't really approved any specific projects.
I, there, there's two projects that I know that we wanted to list. One was the fifty thousand dollars for the sewer project.
For five hundred?
Five hundred thousand. Yeah.
Umatilla.
Umit, city of Umatilla. And the second was to establish a revolving loan infrastructure fund that benefits all of the, uh, the, uh, folks, all the constituents and all the property owners in Umatilla County.
Is that? Is it a cure?
I thought there were two additional projects, the pipeline as well as the courthouse.
But we'd had, we, I think we were gonna include that in the revolving, not like.
No.
No, so we, we had an additional five hundred thousand for the, uh, front of the, um, or at money as needed to match the grant from the state for the front entrance of the, uh, Umatilla County courthouse. How much?
How much was it? Was it two million, was that right? How much, Doug, do you remember how much that was?
If the, what's left now is one point five.
Well, one point five million.
If the, if the five hundred thousand for the courthouse.
Okay, so the one point five, um, or the, uh, central, central pi, or central pipeline.
Or just.
Or just the pipeline. So we have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Laurie, did you get all that?
Um, it's being recorded.
So, I mean, at this point, there are three projects that have been identified.
Um, and that's strictly from the first.
Right.
Four.
Well, I wasn't sure. I mean, at this point, there is no money about it for number four.
Oh, okay, yeah, all right.
At this time, um, I think the next item on the agenda is the, uh, mission statement. And I, I would like to thank, thank everyone, especially the commissioners that, uh, helped working on this, the mission statement and the strategic goals. Um, and I, I'm not sure there's a whole additional conversation because it was extensive. So, um, I thought there was a lot of great input and, uh, thank, thank you guys for all your time invested in this. Uh, and Doug's too, I'm sure, so.
Um, I just wanted to comment that I've had department heads come to me and within their own departments are working on how they get their own department, uh, mission statements and goals to tuck in underneath, um, the commissioners. I thought that was great.
Yep.
So, yeah.
I'm looking at an email from Jennifer Blake, our HR director, that says exactly that, so, so, yeah, I, I agree. Is there a motion in there?
Nope. I need a motion.
I would move to adopt, uh, BCC twenty-twenty-three dash zero-one-six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. The one thing we didn't do, uh, motion passes, is we didn't read the mission statement. Say whoever has. Laurie, send it. The mission statement for, uh, that the Umatilla County Commissioners established is to allocate resources in a transparent manner that effectively and efficiently serve residents of Umatilla County. So that is the mission of statement, and, uh, one of the other commitments, uh, when we put this together is to revisit that and the strategic goals.
Do you want to read the goals too, or no?
I don't got them yet. So, next item on the agenda is the strategic, uh, board strategic goals. And, uh, part of the review, at the same time we did the, the mission statement, was we established the commissioner's, um, strategic goal. And, uh, a lot of discussion on why and how these were done. Um, and, but I, I do want to read them really quick. Um, so the commissioner's strategic, strategic goals will also be revisited. But one is promote public health access for all Umatilla County residents. Prioritize countywide communication and information platforms. Employees will receive targeted investments through training and upgraded work systems to provide a more efficient and effective government. Support critical and urgent recruitment and hiring throughout Umatilla County departments based on data and planning. Long-term stability and growth in Umatilla County will be based on intentional economic stability and growth. Partnering with other entities provide wraparound services and accessible housing for all older, unhoused Umatilla County residents. Continue to identify and participate in solutions for social challenges facing Umatilla County. Expand our ability to optimize our natural resources and geographical advantage in all facets of our populace and to attract visitors. Promote relationships with all twelve incorporated cities in Umatilla County while creating inclusion for all residents of our county. Recognize and invest in the challenges of maintaining Umatilla County's infrastructure and assets. Again, thank you for everybody that put a, a lot of work into those. Entertain a motion.
I move to approve the commissioner's strategic goals.
Second.
Been a motion, uh, to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Supplemental budgets.
Quote, three?
Who's reading them?
Quote spoke here.
Oh, at this time, I'd like to go into a public hearing, um, at which time we'll have the presentation of the supplemental budget.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Paul, CFO, Umatilla County. Uh, this morning, there are seven supplemental budgets for your consideration. I'll summarize them. Budget order twenty-twenty-three dash eighty-four, victim witness assessment. The victim's conference program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in local revenue of forty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars, an increase in materials and services of twenty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars, and an increase in contingency of twenty-five thousand, twenty-five dollars. Budget order twenty-twenty-three dash eighty-six, twenty-fifty plan. The central water project program requires supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in local revenue of five hundred thousand dollars and an increase in materials and services of five hundred thousand dollars. Budget order twenty-twenty-three dash eighty-seven, facilities improvement. The facilities reserve program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers in of three hundred thousand dollars, an increase in capital outlay of one million, seven hundred thousand dollars, and a decrease in contingency of one million, four hundred thousand dollars. Budget order twenty-twenty-three dash eighty-eight, purse reserve program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in rev, federal revenue of one million, ten thousand dollars and an increase in materials and services of one million, ten thousand dollars. Budget order twenty-twenty-three dash ninety-one, fleet management program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of this budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of one hundred fifty-four thousand dollars, an increase in local revenue of two hundred twelve thousand dollars, an increase in capital outlay of six hundred sixteen thousand dollars, and a decrease in contingency of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Budget order twenty-twenty-three dash ninety-four, uh, general fund cultural specific grant program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in federal revenue of one hundred forty-three thousand, six hundred fifty-two dollars, an increase in personnel services of thirty thousand dollars, an increase in materials and services of three thousand dollars, and an increase in contingency of one hundred ten thousand, six hundred fifty-two dollars. And economic development reserve program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers in of one point five million dollars and an increase in materials and services of one point five million dollars. Those are the supplemental budgets before you.
Thank you, Robert. At this time, I'll ask for public testimony. Please limit all public testimony to three minutes. Um, is there any testimony or questions from the public at this time? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and move to deliberations. Questions or comments? Are, you gonna be the reader?
I'll, I'll read a few seconds. Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt budget order twenty-twenty-three dash eighty-four.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, move to approval for, or adopt budget order, budget order number twenty-twenty-three dash eighty-six.
Been a, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, no.
Second. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to adopt budget order twenty-twenty-three dash eighty-seven.
Second.
Been a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move adoption of budget order twenty-twenty-three dash eighty-eight.
Second.
Been a motion to approve and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I move adoption of budget order twenty-twenty-three dash ninety-one.
Second.
Been a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move adoption of budget order twenty-twenty-three dash ninety-four.
Second.
Been a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move adoption of budget order twenty-twenty-three dash ninety-seven.
Second.
There's been a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Had to look at that twice, the pinkie says twenty-thirty-two dash ninety-seven.
Oh, yeah, gotcha. All right, next item on the agenda is going to be a budget transfers. Uh, again, Robert.
Thank you, Christers. Robert Paul, CFO. There are ten budget transfers this morning. Uh, budget order twenty-twenty-three dash eighty-two, general fund GIS program requires a transfer of appropriations to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of thirty thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of thirty thousand dollars. Budget order twenty-twenty-three dash eighty-three, general fund, general county requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of one million dollars and a decrease in contingency of one million dollars. Uh, budget order twenty-twenty-three dash eighty-five, community benefit plan. The local improvement distribution program requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers out of three hundred thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of three hundred thousand dollars. Budget order twenty-twenty-three dash eighty-nine, capital purchases management program requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of twenty thousand dollars, an increase in capital outlay of thirty thousand dollars, and a decrease in contingency of fifty thousand dollars. Budget order twenty-twenty-three dash ninety, community benefit plan, the aware program requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase of materials and services of fifty thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of fifty thousand dollars. Budget order twenty-twenty-three dash ninety-two, the sheriff's office special programs. The emergency grant management program requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of ten thousand dollars and a decrease in capital outlay of ten thousand dollars. Budget order twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three dash ninety-three, the Umatilla County Coalition's wrap program requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in personnel services of seven hundred fifty dollars and a decrease in materials and services of seven hundred fifty dollars. Budget order twenty-twenty-three dash ninety-five, the general fund GIS program requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of this budget. This requires an increase in personnel services of fifty-six thousand, eight hundred forty-five dollars and a decrease in contingency of fifty-six thousand, eight hundred forty-five dollars. Budget order twenty-twenty-three dash ninety-six, the purse reserve stimulus program requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers out of two million dollars, an increase in materials and services of one point two million dollars, an increase in capital outlay of eight hundred thousand dollars, and a decrease in contingency of four million dollars. Budget order twenty-twenty-three dash ninety-eight, the equipment reserve for the GIS program requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of twenty thousand dollars and a ding, decrease in contingency of twenty thousand dollars.
Don't you be the rear of these.
Mr. Chairman, I move, um, to approve budget order two, zero, two, three, dash, eight, two.
Second.
Been a motion to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve budget order twenty-twenty-three dash eighty-three.
Second.
Been a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, I move to approve budget order twenty-twenty-three dash eighty-five.
Second.
Been a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve budget order twenty-twenty-three eighty-nine.
Second.
There's been a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve budget order twenty-twenty-three ninety.
Second.
Been a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve budget order twenty-twenty-three ninety-two.
Second.
Been a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve budget order twenty-twenty-three ninety-three.
Second.
Been a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve budget order twenty-twenty-three ninety-five.
Second.
Been a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve budget order twenty-twenty-three ninety-six.
Second.
Been a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
I'll go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve budget order twenty-twenty-three ninety-eight.
Been a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that finishes our agenda today. Any comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Timmons.
Sound off.
Been a good meeting. I have no comment.
You know what, I do have a comment. I, uh, Mrs. Litten is here today from Hermiston, and I met her out and about this week, and, uh, she decided to come and join our meeting today, so, uh, we're glad she's here.
Yeah, we really are.
Thank you.
Always fun to see her at Hermiston City Council meetings too, so it's, uh, are you enjoying your, your, uh, time on the council?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, at this time, I'm going to adjourn today's meeting. Thank you, everybody.